Twenty-four to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let's stand together as our county attorney, Mr. Eric Grady, will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to remain standing after the prayer for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Father, we seek you today in the name of Jesus, whom you have given to us as the mediator, that we would experience the truth of your salvation. We put our trust in you because of your steadfast love and faithfulness. Therefore, we plead with you to make your name holy in our county and our world. In all matters, we ask you to accomplish your will among these county commissioners, that by your authority, you would bring about peace. We beg of you to guard hearts against jealousy and selfish ambition and grant your impartial wisdom. Now to you who are able to do far more abundantly than all that we ask or think, according to the power at work within us, to you be the glory among the nations and in Christ Jesus throughout all generations forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning to everyone, and we welcome you here to the Board of Commissioners meeting, which is your meeting to those that may be viewing online. We welcome you also. I would ask for those of us that are present in the room, if we would, to make sure our cell phones are on silence. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda packets. Are there any items that you desire to remove or add from today's agenda?
Make a motion the be approved, the agenda be approved as is.
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passed. We're honored this morning to have Ms. Wendy Johnson, resident engineer, with us to discuss about the US Highway 70 improvements in James City. We welcome you.
Good morning.
Come right up. Good morning.
So, I hope you all had a wonderful Father's Day weekend. I'm so glad to be here this morning to talk about the James City project. Obviously, it's a project that's very important to the department, but to the New Bern area as well. So, I understand it might have been just a month or so ago that you had a presentation on the James City project. So, some of the information I'm going to talk about this morning may be very similar to what y'all saw then. But please, if y'all want to talk about something specific, I would be more than happy to talk about whatever y'all would like to talk about related to the project. I am talking mainly about James City, and obviously, there's other projects in the area. And so, this morning, we do have, as well as myself, Wendy Johnson, who's the resident engineer. I have Jordan Scott, who is the division construction engineer for this area, so he can hopefully answer any questions y'all might have about other projects. So, I hope you all are aware that the James City project is kind of a unique project for NC DOT, and then it's a design-build project, which means that basically, the project, not only what is the project construction being done by our contractor, but they have teamed with a designer who's also doing the design of the project, which means that the project had like a shorter duration to get to construction, which is good, but the construction timeline's longer because it includes right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. But it allows the contractor to do innovative things and make changes as we're moving along through the project that hopefully ultimately deliver the project in a more expedient manner. The US, James City is obviously part of the US 70 corridor improvement, which includes many projects. I'm sure y'all are all familiar with those. So, this is just the video we always show. Y'all have probably seen it. It's just a bird's eye view of what the build-out of the James City project will look like, but it is a good reminder that this is where we're going. It is amazing to think about where we're at today and that ultimately we'll be at this point. But as we're going through, we're basically going from the west to the east. You see, we're approaching the Williams interchange. US 70 will be going up and over at all of the interchange locations. We'll have roundabouts, as you see in this video. And as we're moving along, you'll notice that we have basically three lanes in each direction that are through lanes, as well as your interchange ramp, auxiliary lanes that are coming in and out. That's Airport. Airport's the only interchange that doesn't have roundabouts. It's more of a traditional compressed interchange. And then we're coming to Grantham. There is one difference for Grantham than what is shown in this video. There's actually four roundabouts at that location. I'll show you a picture of that in just a minute. And then we're moving through the corridor, and as y'all are probably well aware, we do have a service road that runs the length of the project adjacent to eastbound US 70 that goes all the way from Thurman back to Food Line. So, if you were in Carolina Colors, you want to go to the Food Line, you could take the service road completely through the project and never have to get on the interstate. And as we're moving again through the project, we're coming to the end, and this is the Thurman Road interchange. And this is where the next project will pick up, which we're calling the C project. As you move through the C project, you would end up getting to the Havelock bypass project. So, this is just depiction of kind of what the interchanges will look like. There's one difference as far as our red brick is on this center of the roundabout as opposed to the way this looks. And then this is just, if you were, say, on Thurman Road and you were looking toward US 70, this is what you'll see. And then, as I was mentioning, and this is the Grantham Road interchange, and we actually have four roundabouts at this interchange. Two of those are open to traffic. I don't know if any of y'all have ridden through them. In the very beginning, we got a little bit of pushback that there could be some navigation problems with roundabouts, but so far, we've had zero complaints since they've opened, so that's good. The other thing that was not depicted in the video I just showed y'all is the noise wall locations. And basically, on the very far western end of the project, we do have noise walls along the historic James City community area. And I think I have just a depiction of kind of what the aesthetics of those walls will look like. And the other thing that's not depicted in the video is that the pedestrian overpass will remain. And we did have some damage to that overpass a few months ago, but we're working with our contractor to make that repair. One of the things that we get a lot of questions about is just the construction impacts and how all of that's going to work. I think y'all probably all familiar with the fact that during this time of year, we have no daytime lane closures, Monday through Friday, or even on the weekends. We do allow nighttime lane closures during the week only, but not during the weekend. And as we get through the summer months, then we flip after September 15th back to a time that we do allow daytime lane closures and nighttime lane closures on the weekend on US 70. And as far as service roads, you know, we pretty much allow our contractor during non-peak hours to have flagging or automated flaggers on those service roads. We are trying very hard to make sure that we always maintain access to businesses and that when we have detours that affect businesses, that we always try to do something that we release to the public so they're aware of those changes. Stages of construction, you know, to take US 70 from what it is today, where you're basically at these at-grade intersections, and make it so that US 70 is going up and over each one of these cross-lines is a process in and of itself. And so, these, this just kind of video talks through the stages of construction and how we're basically going to do that. But the general sense is that each one of these interchanges, we are building these new service roads, and one of the things you would have noticed when you look at the video is that the service roads go out and away from US 70. They're no longer right there at the signalized intersections. And that's all to make room to build our new ramps. And once the new ramps are built, US 70 will be put on the new ramps, still two lanes in each direction, so that the traffic is out and away from the middle of US 70 so that we can build those overpasses. That's what this video shows. And this particular, where you're seeing now, what you'll notice is on these particular wild lines, say Grantham Road, you're no longer able in this, when we get to this phase, to cross straight across. So, you're actually going to come up to US 70 if you're on Grantham and you wanted to go across, and you're going to have to make a right onto US 70 and go and make a U-turn to come back in the opposite direction. And that's kind of what the video is depicting in this scenario. That will be signalized control, U-turns, so they will work in coordination with the signals that we already have in place. And this is just a continued depiction of kind of what that will look like with those U-turn movements. And it will be intermingled with some construction traffic. But once we're in this phase, then we're actually able to build US 70 up and over. The first interchange that you'll see this happening is at Grantham. And if you've been to the Grantham Road recently, you see a lot of work that's going on right adjacent to US 70. You might see our, some of our permanent walls. We have some shorter permanent walls that are there. You'll see some temporary walls, all moving towards this, getting 70 on these ramps in that location. And this is just a really quick pictorial representation of that process, and I'll try to go through really quickly. One of the things, you know, just stepping back, just some statistics, is there was like 250 parcels that were acquired right away. We had to relocate 41 businesses. Most of that demolition is done. You know, the project had to relocate all of the city's water, the city's sewer, the county's water, all the city's power. And it wasn't just some of it, and also PNG's facility. It was all five miles of it, but we're at the very tail end of all of that work being completed. So, here again, I'm just going to run through this really quickly. You just, the color coding kind of shows how we're building out the service roads, and we're widening 70, shifting traffic onto the 70 ramps, and then you get to the point where you're building that interior. And as I mentioned, we will have signalized control at those U-turn movements. And this is just another pictorial representation of kind of what does this all look like when we're building US 70 up and over. And you can kind of see in this schematic that you see US 70 traffic shifted out to the sides. Still have our service roads open, and we're building US 70. Most of US 70 at the interchange areas will have walls, so it's different than what you would see like if you were Glen Burnie. This, these are very compressed interchanges. And so, one of the things that was needed, not only are you building walls, but you know, obviously, when you build interchanges, you have a lot of field. The soils in this area are very compressible. And the contractor proposed the use of basically lightweight cellular concrete that will be used to bring these fields up, so it won't be using traditional thorough or dirt material. We'll be using this cellular concrete. And this photo is kind of showing example of that being placed, and you can see the walls. And this is what our construction will look like. What that lightweight cellular concrete does for us is, when you have highly compressible soils and you load them with very heavy material, in order for our bridge construction to continue, we have to wait for settlement to occur. Because we're going to be using this lighter weight product, then our settlement times are going to be reduced. So, these are just some charts that would show you if you were using like a normal weight material. You know, the worst example would be like Tawarna Way. We would have to load the material in and wait for it to settle, and it would take 260 days for that settlement to occur. But with the use of cellular concrete, we're talking about being able to achieve this settlement that we need to within about 90 days, and that compresses the total timeline of building each individual interchange. The other thing it does is it reduces the number of trucks on the road. So, if you're bringing in traditional dirt material, it's all coming in on trucks. And with using this lightweight cellular concrete, we're actually batching it on-site. The materials are coming in in tankers, and then we'll have actual setup on-site where it's being mixed. And it reduces and eliminates the trucks on the road, you know, intermingling with traffic and such. So, then just another innovative thing that's been done, hopefully you guys have seen our Smart Work Zone system. A lot of people don't realize that that is actually fully automated, and it's all running based on sensors that are along the roadway. They're actually tracking how fast cars are moving, and then therefore displaying real-time information. We just recently put in all of these signs that you see on this diagram, and we actually had a lot of interesting feedback. People thought we were telling them, you have to go on these alternate routes. They didn't think that was a very smart idea, but it's actually just a suggestion. And the reason we have this suggestion is because as we go through the summer, you guys probably have noticed, we're starting to introduce a lot more barrier. That barrier placement's going to continue, or going to continue with, we're actually reducing the travel lanes from 12 feet to 11 feet. We're putting in barrier, and some places, we have barrier on both sides. Unfortunately, we have to do that to build the road, but what it means is if there's an incident, it makes it more difficult to clear that incident. So, this messaging is really more for worst-case scenario, a bad incident that would maybe shut down 70, and we need to look at routing people in other locations. There are also changeable message boards that go with some of these signings, that if something really bad were to happen, we can, we would actually start displaying messages to tell people to use the alternate routes. As far as the construction schedule goes, the project's really broken down into three pieces for the way the contractor sees it, and Grantham and Airport are kind of the first segment. Williams is the second segment, and Thurman and Tawarna are the third segment. Just because of the way the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation has gone, it's really made the contractor really focus more on A and C, but they are, they are now working in B. As far as completion of the project, we are expecting, our contractor is anticipating that it will be completed in the middle of 2026. We have done a big public information campaign. I hope you all have been part of it, seen it, subscribed to our traffic alerts, but there's information here. If you, if you have not, you can just Google James City NC DOT, and this window will pop up, and you can subscribe. It says get project updates for traffic alerts. And we do send that, that information out on a weekly basis about US 70. And whenever we have detours or changes, we do have newsletters. This is just an example of a detour route, like the Food Line Shopping Center. This is one right now where we actually have traffic in a temporary pattern. If you've been there, you'd notice we opened up a new driveway for them. We are anticipating in about two weeks, their old, the old entrance and new service road, the first part of it will open, that that's shown in red, and we'll be moving on to Phase 2, where we're actually building the new service road between Taco Bell and But anyway, so here's our project information. We do have a project number that folks call. We do advertise. We do get messages to that. And like I said, you can subscribe to our website. But that's really it. What questions do y'all have for me?
All right. Thank you for that presentation. We'll begin by, with Vice Chair Booker.
Good morning, Wendy.
Good morning.
Thanks again for coming.
Yes.
I know you guys are busy. Two things. Number one, I've heard from citizens about the Tawarna Road area looks really bad right now. And can you speak to that?
I think the difficult, yes, the difficult thing regarding Tawarna, as you know, Tawarna's entrance went all the way to 70 before.
Yep.
And now, all of that is encompassed in the project limits. And as part of, you know, ultimately, it will bear no resemblance to what was there before because you have the new service roads that are being built there. It is, it is highly difficult. It's a construction project. It will never look as it did before.
Sure, sure.
But once the project is finished, then it should have a much more pleasing look than it has today. But I know we do get phone calls regularly from Tawarna asking, can we clean it up? And it's, that's a very difficult thing to do. We, I mean, literally, our contractor has a staging area there where they're storing and stockpiling crushed asphalt, crushed concrete. And we really, it is such a limited footprint. You know, the department really tried to minimize impacts to businesses. So, you can only put stuff where there's open spots to put it. Unfortunately, that's an open spot. So, I don't know if I have a better answer than that.
That's fine. You're aware of it, and hopefully, we can improve it as, as time goes on.
Yes.
Couple points of information for the, for the public. You mentioned utility relocation.
Yes.
And you, you went through that quickly, and your presentation was perfect. It gave everybody a taste of what's going on.
Right.
But I just want to, for the benefit of the public that are watching this and people in the audience, the magnitude of relocating all of these utilities was, was tremendous. And we've spoken several times on this subject.
Yes.
That really caused, I won't say a delay, but a big part of the time that it's taken so far.
Yes.
It's been, I don't know, a couple of years, I guess, we've been working on this?
Right, right, yes.
So, a big piece of that was trying to get all these utilities, and you didn't mention, but I think fiber was another one that had to be relocated. So, I, I hope everybody understands that, that when you do this, you don't just build a road. You gotta, you've got to do so many things to get prepared.
Right.
And, and the utilities was a big part of that. The other piece, the last time we, we spoke and went on a little drive, the thing that impressed me was all of the service roads, all the access roads that run on both sides are going to have curbs and gutters.
That's correct.
And that is an amazing amount of work. How many miles of that did you?
Five miles each, yeah.
Each direction.
Even though the adjacent eastbound, it's not complete, it's almost complete from beginning to end. There's a couple breaks in it.
And some places, you, you had to complete, completely create a new road, like by Tawarna, there was no access road.
Yes, correct.
So, that, that is going to, going to really look beautiful when it's all done. The fact that those roads aren't just paved roads.
Right.
They got curbs, gutters. They look very, very nice, the ones that are done. So, I just wanted to make those two comments.
Thanks.
I don't have any, any questions.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, and thank you, Wendy, for this. It's been very informative. Two questions, and this relates to the service roads, because I think that's what most residential people around here will be using. When this is all done?
Yes.
The, the service roads now are very narrow.
Yes.
Are the service roads that we are going to have when this is done, are they going to be a standard two-lane? Are they going to be a narrow service road?
So, they are standard two-lanes, and they do have 12-foot lanes, but they have extra width that's basically almost like a bike lane.
Right.
And in addition to that, you know, along the cross-streets like Grantham and Thurman and Tawarna and all of that, they all have sidewalk. So, there will be sidewalk up and under each of these overpasses. Now, the sidewalk does not extend down the parallel service roads, but they are extra width. Those parallel service roads are extra width to accommodate a bike lane.
So, we've gone from narrow service roads to what I will call road roads?
Yes.
Okay.
Even better than road roads.
Right, even better, improved road roads.
Yes.
And the second question is, other than the, the airport interchange, are the road roads come, are they going to have stoplights? Are they going to be a straight shot?
So, there'll be no stoplights within the entire five-mile corridor, including Airport. Now, Airport is set up that if a need arose in the future, there are two locations. One is where Airport comes into Old Cherry Point, and then another is where the off-ramp as you're traveling eastbound loops back around. That could potentially have a signal in the future, but the traffic doesn't meet the warrants currently to, to need that.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Commissioner Hunt?
I was curious, when will all the service roads be open and Highway 70 virtually close?
So, they're working on the service roads, you know, as we're moving through the project, and we are kind of opening them a piece at a time. So, we don't, we really don't have a specific timeline for opening all of the service roads. It just, it will start coming faster, and just going back to what Commissioner Booker said, it's just related to when all of the utilities were done. And then, once the utilities were done, the other part that curb and gutter has is it has storm drain under it. So, for an example, just of the numbers, this project, we're installing about 700 storm drain boxes and 80,000 linear feet of storm drain. And all of that has to be in place before the service, well, no, I mean, for service road portion, it has to be done before the service road can be, can be completed. But they are concentrating their efforts currently on finishing what we call SR 2 and 5, which is basically the service road that runs between Grantham and Airport on both sides of the road. So, that will be in front of Trent and then opposite to that. And then, as I mentioned, they're also concentrating on doing the service road that's in the Food Line parking lot. Okay?
That's it. Commissioner Howard?
Thank you, Wendy, for answering our questions and coming today. My question goes back to the bike lanes, I mean, the extended, an extension for the bike lanes. I want to thank you guys for that, something a lot of my citizens have been asking for as they try to get out their bikes. Right now, it's difficult.
Right.
Almost impossible on the, on the service road because it's so narrow.
Yes.
With the expansion of the roads, will there be any barrier divots or any indication that it's a bike lane?
No.
Or just be an extra road?
No, it's just extra roadway. But there will be the sidewalks that will make, you know, pack, you know, obviously, pedestrians right now cannot use the pedestrian overpass, and we do have a sign pedestrian, which bikes use to route using the pedestrian signal that is at Williams. But at all the locations, once the project's finished, there'll be, you know, good passage for bikes and pedestrians to get from one side of 70 to the other.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Did I hear you say that there'll be additional lanes in the James City area? Did you say it would be like three lanes instead of the two?
Yes, ma'am. So, basically, from the river to just past where Garner is now, there'll be three lanes in each direction. And then, you'll actually have some additional auxiliary lanes where those ramps are coming in and out, and then it drops back to two in each direction after that.
How does that affect going across the river into New Bern and into Bay Bar without those?
Well, you know, that, that area is already wider.
Okay.
Because you already have the split-off, you know, if you're going into.
Just fit right into that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You have anything, Tom?
No. All right. One last comment, and that is for, again, for the, a lot of people over the last few years have said, why are we doing this? And I don't know where I got this number, and the sheriff may have a better one, but last I heard, in, I think, 2022 or 2021 or 22, we had about 500 accidents between the river and, and Carolina Colors. And some of those were fatalities. That means the fire department has to go to bring their trucks out, their volunteers have to come out to each one of those accidents. Either the sheriff or the highway patrol have to work every one of those accidents. This is going to be a wonderful, wonderful thing to give them a break. And, and a lot of people, I happen to have a personal acquaintance who was killed at one of those intersections, so about four or five years ago. So, it's, this whole thing is worth it, even though it's a pain in the neck right now for everybody. I know it's going to be inconvenient for the next two years at times, but in my opinion, it's really worth it, and we'll be so thankful when it's done.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Staff, you got anything this morning to ask? All right. If not, Wendy, we thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you being here, and, and thank you, Jordan, for being here also.
Right.
And have a good day. Item two this morning is the Board Budget Ordinance, Mr. Jack White and Craig Warren. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. All the hard, hard work culminates to a few moments with you this morning, and I think Steve's going to pull it up on the screen. After all the budget meetings, all the time staff spends with it, all the time we spend together. together with it, you basically drill it down into a budget ordinance, which we're gonna cover with you. Since the last meeting you had, you had the required public hearing, you heard from the public, no additional meetings since that time. So we're just gonna go with where, Steve, I'm on page two. This is the, starting in Section 1 is the general fund. This is the revenues that come in, $155,339,124. You can see how those go from ad valorem taxes down to appropriated fund balance. I know we promised you there was no fund balance in there, so I had to check on it this morning. It is actually some carryover money for the voluntary ag district donation and the health WIC program fees. 34961 voluntary ag district, 450s the health WIC program fee. So that's just carrying over into the next year's budget from those. And then, we move into the second part, which is the appropriation side, as you can go through. Each of these items are what was discussed by the board and decided upon, starting with Commissioners and ending on page three with transfers to other funds. And you can see the, the revenues match the appropriations at $155,339,124. Continuing on page three and Section 2 are your, your different funds that are not included in the general fund, starting with the seized property fund, part of the sheriff's office and what they're doing. We'll start on page four with our fire districts. Each fire district has their own taxing rate. We went through those, we talked about their needs. And as you just walked down, page four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine encompass your fire departments. Continuing on page nine is the emergency telephone system fund. As we talk about, we get funding from the state, and that's where that funding is assimilated, and then it goes out and funds our 911 center across the street. You got your occupancy tax trust fund on page 10, your representative, representative payee fund, part of the social services department there on page 10. 11 is your opioid settlement fund, school debt service fund. And then moving on to page 12 is your capital reserve fund, $4,213,500 appropriated out of that fund. School capital fund, you can see that there is one category one, school project over $100,000. It's HVAC control upgrade at Vanceboro Farm Life Elementary at $110,000. So that's why that's showing up here, not in the general fund, because you pull those out and deal with them separately here. Page 13 is the water fund at the top. Talked a lot about that. Mr. Dale's in the back there, 4.806 million there. And then you have your Northwest Craven Water and Sewer Fund. That's just some, some carryover from the way we used to do it. Self-insurance fund on page 14, that's how the county provides our health and dental program. As you can see there, what we've got. Also on page 14 is the levy of taxes. Just for the record, to make sure I get it here, the tax rate is .4448, or the same rate you set last year, no tax increase in this budget. And I should've said earlier, there was no tax increase in any fire department budget either as we got through. You can see the estimated valuation, Steve, you keep it up with me there, I beat you. Excuse me, go back. You see the estimated valuations of each of the fire departments in the far right column. Page 15 is the Charge of the Budget Administration, which is my, I serve as your budget officer. And these are the things we've done traditionally to allow the budget to be implemented and managed throughout the year. And while this document may feel a little heavier this year, because if you go past page 15, you're also incorporating and setting the Craven County Schedule of Fees. We've decided to do this each year and incorporate in the budget ordinance, so those fees are set at this time. Of course, there, there will probably be changes as you move through the year with different agencies that we work with, but just to point out, the only significant fee increase in here this year is your solid waste recycling fee going from $60 to $72, and your new schedule of fees for your new stormwater program, which was mandated from the state that we had to start, we will start July 1st. And I'm gonna go back to page 15. Copies of the ordinance will be with myself, Mr. Craig behind me, with Leslie. And if you so feel the need to adopt it, this is the, the point, unless there's questions where we can help you with, this will be the point where we're at.
Okay, Commissioners, you have any questions?
I'm willing to adopt the program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget ordinance and fee schedule. Is any discussion on the motion? Here are no discussion on the motion. I just want to say on behalf of the board, again, we, we want to thank you, Jack, Craig, the whole team, for your countless hours that you put in, all the department heads, many of you who sit in here for working with us. It was the goal of this Board of Commissioners, not to raise taxes straight across. Hard decisions, as we started talking about, looking at fire departments and, and the needs that they have, and, and needs in county government as a whole. But I think everybody that we've seen reflect in recent weeks, as we've met, the cost of living is attacking all of us, and we're all feeling it. And, you know, we're to a point, definitely, we've got some essential needs in county government, not to take away from making sure that we serve our citizens to the best and that we can adequately, but we've all got to tighten our belts a little bit, and that's what this budget was about. And y'all presented that budget that we asked for, we thank you for that. And I know, we always say, once you finish with one budget, you start on the next, so, but maybe you'll have a few days here of, of rest before you have to start looking at the, the next fiscal year. Here are no further discussion from the Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? Yes. Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, if I could just have one moment, and I appreciate everything you said, and I appreciate other things the board said at our last meeting, but it is certainly a team effort, and I just want to recognize our, our finance team, Mr. Warren, Sarah Williams, LaShel Bun, the time and effort they put in it after we're all done putting this document together is, they, they got a great team. And then my team, budget team, management team, the work they do to get here, so, and I, I see a couple of department heads out here, and, you know, it starts with them, you know. They come in with the right attitude every year and care about what we do here, so it means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is the consent agenda. You have before you the minutes of the June 3 reconvened session and June 3, 2024 regular session, and also tax releases and refunds. Are there any consent agenda items you desire to pull?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, is any discussion on the motion? Here are none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, Departmental Matters, first item we have is Social Services, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Managers, thank you for having me. We bring before you two budget amendments this morning. The first, regarding our foster care lines, these lines provide payments for room and board for children who are in our foster care program. This is in the amount of $45,000, $40,000 in 4B and $5,000 in 4E. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you may have them.
All right, any questions for Mr. Merritt?
Yep.
All right, here are none. Do I have a motion, and that is to approve additional funds for foster care?
So moved.
And 4E. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, all right, and B?
Now, second budget amendment is to amend the budget for our representative payee fund in the amount of $65,000. These are funds that we manage for individuals, and we have legal custody and control over those funds. And what it is, is that we have to utilize those funds for their needs and well-being, and as we stated in our packet, that this was, had to be a special revenue fund to run through the budget. So we're just making sure that our budget matches what we have in our fund to spend.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second, that is to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $65,000. Any further discussion on the motion? Here are none. All, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, item five is Sheriff Hughes, our food service year-end budget amendment. Good evening, sir.
Sir, good, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today. Got one item, it is our food service in the jail. Over the past year, we've had an excessive increase in our inmate population throughout the year, which obviously, we've got to feed them. And with the increased prices of food as well, which we're all experiencing, I'm here today to request a budget amendment in the amount of $79,500 to cover overages of the cost of our food service for the inmates.
All right, any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $79,500. Any further discussion on the motion? Here are none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff Hughes, you have anything to share with us this morning?
I do. I just want to echo what you said about the, the budget and the hard work that Jack's team put on it. It was a very smooth, transparent process with my office and his staff, and I want to thank them for that, each of you. And thank y'all for looking after our greatest assets, and that's our, our county employees who do a phenomenal job every day, so I want to thank each of you for that.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. All right, item six is solid waste, a budget amendment for the convenience centers. Mr. Astor, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for having me this morning. I want to continue the theme, as what it seems across the board, is the solid waste department has experienced an increase in utilization at our seven convenience centers. Last fiscal year, we were averaging 330 dumpster pulls per month. This fiscal year, we're averaging 338, which has resulted in a budget shortage in the following expenditure lines. Convenience center hauling, demolition tipping fees, and vegetation tipping fees. With two months left to be billed by the contractor, the solid waste department is requesting the Craven County Board of Commissioners to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $75,000 in order to cover the cost of operations for the final two months of this fiscal year.
All right, any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the motion, and that is to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $75,000. Here are no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call and roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Board.
Have a good day. All right, item seven is the Water Department, revisions to Craven County's water system, and we have Mr. Booth and Mr. Grady. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's well this morning. We're here to present and introduce you all to a updated and revised water system ordinance. Steve, we've got a PowerPoint that I would like to give you a very broad overview of what we've done. We do have it before you for your information, but we also request that you consider setting a public hearing at the July 1 meeting, so we can move forward with the adoption thereafter. Next slide, if you would, Steve, I don't know where the clicker might be.
Here, I put it in the little cubby hole there. My apologies.
Now you're assuming I know how to use it, so. I guess I don't know how to use it. Okay. Our goals in updating the ordinance were generally to update and modernize the water system ordinance. When you look at our ordinance, the vast majority of it deals with sewer. Sewer out at the industrial park, private package plants, just a lot of sewer provisions, and of course, Craven County's no longer in the sewer business, so all of that needs to go away and can be deleted. The other primary goal was to add provisions to match our current operations. We've got technical provisions on cross-connections and backflow, then we have administrative issues on rates and ownership. Over the years, it's not been uncommon to get a call from Dale and his team, this is the situation, this is what we need to do, and my question is, what does our ordinance say? And frequently, the answer is, well, our ordinance doesn't really address this. And, and so we're trying to bring the ordinance up to match what Dale and his team do day in and day out. This is probably one of the most important takeaways for the Commissioners and our citizens. We should see no changes in service from the Water Department or in the routine operations of the Water Department. The day before adoption and the day after the adoption, our customers, it, it should be a non-event, and I think that's important. Frequently, when we do adopt an ordinance, we're changing the, the way the county interacts with citizens in a very meaningful way. This is one of the exceptions, it's more internal and more administrative. Removal provisions, as I alluded to, we've got non-public community water systems, sewer service, just countywide, but also specifically for the industrial park, and I think it's good that our ordinance, if adopted, is going from 43 to 24 pages, so it'll be a little more user-friendly. Water system provisions that we are updating and/or including, we've got thorough definitions, clarification on ownership insofar as the meter, where our line starts, where the owner's responsibility starts, how the system is operated, and maintenance requirements. We also go into detail on connections, how the connection process works, and some technical specifications. Rates, this is really to update the ordinance and the practice with what the board actually already does. The board will adopt the rates from year to year, as you just did in the, in the budget ordinance a few minutes ago, and make it clear that that is the province of this board. Again, cross-connection and backflow provisions, I kind of laugh with this, since I spent too much time in Chapel Hill, I can't explain all that stuff to you, but Dale certainly can if need be. And finally, enforcement. You know, if we take steps vis-à-vis a customer to cut off service, or if there's damage to a meter, we need to be very specific that we have authority in our ordinance for the steps that we take. And so, we're basically codifying Dale's practices and the water system's practices over the years on these topics. Okay? That's about as short as a lawyer can be, so I'm here for any questions y'all have. And Dale is present as the ordinance is reviewed, feel free to reach out to us on any particular provisions, and of course, hopefully, we'll have a public hearing in a couple of weeks, and we'll be on standby as you need us.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
No, sir, I move that we set a public hearing for 1 July.
We have a motion and a second to set the public hearing for July 1. Is any discussion on the motion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, item eight is Human Resources, request to amend the personnel resolution, healthcare coverage for retirees. Ms. Parker, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. First, as Human Resources Director, I would like to thank the Board for everything that the budget you just adopted did for our county employees. Appreciate that very much. So, this morning, I'm here to request an amendment to the personnel resolution. The Craven County's health plan, which is self-insured, will experience a five percent rate increase for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and the retiree rates are for the insurance paid by the county are specified in the personnel resolution based upon the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year rates. That's shown in the policy language attached in your packets. The five percent race rate increase will be passed along to be paid by retirees unless the above referenced policy is amended to reflect the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five rates. Some requesting an amendment to the personnel resolution.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions you have before we entertain the motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended personnel resolution section related to retiree health insurance. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item nine is Finance. Mr. Cravel. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. I have three items for you this morning. The first one is late-listing penalties budget amendment. Our late-listing penalties that we received year-to-date have exceeded the one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand that we originally budgeted for this fiscal year. The funds are collected by the county and paid to the school system. It's projected that an additional eighty thousand will be collected through the end of June, and a budget amendment is needed at this time in order to continue remitting those funds to the school system.
All right, Commissioners, any questions? All right, I have a motion. I have a motion, Commissioner Mark, I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of eighty thousand dollars. This is for the late listings. Any further discussion on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
These monies are given to the school system in addition to the, yeah, budget. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they get additional eighty thousand dollars.
That's correct. It's in addition to the current operating in the capital.
Thank you.
Basically, what this budget amendment does is over the anticipated amount, meaning there's been more late-listing penalties collected, so this is actually an overage to what they thought they were going to get. Yeah, we budgeted one-hundred-and-thirty-five. We're going to probably end up somewhere in the two-hundred range, so over budget, we need a little bit more to continue to pay it, pay them out. It's a good budget amendment.
Does statute specify where they can spend these dollars at, or just anything towards education?
I believe it's general. Yeah, I'm aware of any restrictions, but I can look.
Got you. Well, it's fine. I just didn't know. All right, any further questions? All right, hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and B.
Another good BA for a budget amendment before you is for our rescue squads. So, our ambulance service fees that we billed and collected by the county on behalf of the following rescue squads are anticipated to exceed our original budget projections. Overall, total trips were up nine-point-eight percent in the current fiscal year over last year. What this has done is it's estimated to bring in an additional two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars in order to continue remitting funds to the squads through the end of the fiscal year. The projected increases by each squad are seventeen thousand for Cove City, eighty-five thousand for Bridgeton, ninety thousand for Township Seven, twenty thousand for New Bern, Craven, and twenty-five thousand for Vansprohl.
All right, any questions? All right, hear none. Do I have a motion that we approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand for the rescue squads. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and C.
Okay, thank you. The final item is, it's been a long time coming. This is the closing of the convention center recovery project, and I'm very happy to present this to you this morning. The project began in September twenty-eighteen after the center sustained significant damages from Hurricane Florence, and basically consisted of three phases. We did a put-back repair, a renovation and improvements project, and we did some mitigation work over there. As reflected in your project ordinance, in your agendas, the final budget for this project was thirteen million, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Of that amount, twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars were spent, actual expenses, so coming in under budget by approximately five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. These leftover funds are reflected in your project ordinance as a transfer back to the general fund. The project's revenues comprised of a ten-million-dollar loan for the renovations and improvements. We also budgeted five-hundred thousand from our occupancy tax trust fund and the remaining from our general fund in an amount of two million, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand and forty-four dollars. Additional revenues were also realized during the period of the project. We collected fifty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-nine dollars in interest earnings, as well as recovered one-hundred-and-seven thousand and thirty-four dollars in our contractors' sales tax refunds. So, all the expenditures and revenues for this project have been recorded, and we are now ready to close it. The attached budget amendment and adjusting the final budget to the actuals within the project fund is also needed. Staff recommends closing this, the project ordinance, and approving the budget amendment.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just, may I comment? Just would tell you, you're coming in at five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, under budget. Gene and his team did an excellent job. I know you've all been there many times since this has been complete. It is a fabulous facility. We continue to get very positive feedback from our clients on the structure. I just always like to point out, there is a phase four that we held on until the hotel room situation is at a point where we think we can expand again, and that would be your exhibition space going from the building toward Front Street, along that sort of sidewalk area. So, just for the record.
Just another note, too, we actually, by the end of this project, we collected insurance proceeds of three-point-three million dollars, and we are currently pending four-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars in mitigation from FEMA, which would be to raise the HVAC in the chiller. We elevated that, and then we also put a flood barrier, a movable flood barrier around some of the entrances that were damaged from Florence, so.
Great job. All right, several actions here, just make sure we have it for the record. It is to, the motion and a second is to approve the budget amendment, the ordinance update, and to close out the project. All right, we have motion, second. Not hear no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item ten is appointment. You have before you pending, current, and upcoming. Does, do any of the Commissioners have any pending appointments? You have a list there before you. All right, hear, okay, hear no pending. We will now move to current. The first is the Craven County ABC Board. Mr. Chip Chagnon has resigned from the ABC Board. He is our current chair. His resignation will become effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. In your agenda packets, you do have applicants seeking appointment. Commissioners, today, as we consider the ABC Board, there's two actions since Mr. Chagnon has, will resign effective June thirtieth. The first action will be to fill his seat. The second action by this Board of Commissioners, which we were going to have to do anyway, is to appoint a chairperson for the ABC Board, and so, staff is recommending that we do both today. So, the first action would be, are there nominations for the seat?
Mr.
Go ahead.
No, no, sir, you go.
I'd like to nominate Guy Greg.
All right, we have a nomination of Guy Greg.
Second.
All right, are there any other nominations? All right, hear no additional nominations. Mr. Greg will be accepted by acclamation. All right, the second action is to elect the Chair of the ABC Board.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Kenny Morris as our new Chair.
Okay, we have the nomination of Kenny Morris. Are there any other nominations from the Board? Hear none. Mr. Morris will be elected by acclamation. Mr. Morris's seat is for, that is a every-year, one-year term.
One year.
And then Vice Chair Booker is our representative on there, and then y'all will elect your officers at your next meeting.
Right.
All right, thank you. All right, next is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have several seats here this morning. The first one is Ms. Jean, I always can't say her last name, Kennachick, Kennachick, and substance abuse professional. She is a current Board member. She is, she can be reappointed. Are there any nominations?
I wouldn't reappoint.
Okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Jean. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Hear none. We were set by acclamation. Next is Ms. Catherine Hardison, a nonprofit seat. She is eligible for reappointment. Are there any nominations?
I will nominate Ms. Hardison, then.
Are there additional nominations? Hear none. We were set by acclamation. The third is the applicant, Luanne Mack, seeking to fill Seat Seven, vacated by Mr. Swain. I suppose, Madam Clerk, this is a school seat, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there, what's desired of the Board?
I nominate Luanne.
All right, we have a nomination of Ms. Mack. Are there additional nominations? Hear none. We were set by acclamation. Next, you have the applicant of Angela Wilson, seeking to fill the student seat. You have documentation in your agenda packets. What's desired of the Board?
I would approve it.
All right, we have the nomination of Ms. Wilson. Are there additional nominations? Hear none. We were set by acclamation. And next is the applicant Lauren Tucker, seeking to fill the Trillium seat, held by Susan Hall, and you have that documentation in your agenda packets, also.
I nominate Ms. Tucker.
All right, we have a nomination of Ms. Tucker. Are there additional nominations? Hear none. We were set by acclamation. All right, next is Recreation Advisory Committee, Mr. Russell Caton, seeks reappointment. I would, Commissioners, ask that Mr. Caton be reappointed, as he represents the rural part of the county on there. Are there additional nominations? Hear none. We were set by acclamation. All right, then you see the upcoming appointments. Please take note of that. Are there any other appointments that we've forgotten today? All right, hear none. Thank you. We will go to item eleven, would be the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady.
Commissioners, good morning again. I have two items for your consideration this morning. Both involve county-owned surplus property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first parcel is located at five-oh-three West Street with a parcel ID number of eight- oh-oh-eight, oh-six-six. It is in the city of New Bern. The city of New Bern has already given its approval to the offer, which is in the amount of four thousand dollars. The past due taxes and the original costs of foreclosure totaled eleven thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. The tax value of the property is eight thousand dollars, and I would recommend the Board consider giving initial approval to this so we can get it out for upset bids.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for parcel number eight-dash-zero-zero- Is any further discussion on the motion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
The second parcel is located at five-oh-nine Dorst Avenue with a parcel ID number of eight- dash-oh-oh-eight, dash-oh-five-oh. This is also in the city of New Bern, and the city has given its initial approval to this offer, which is in the amount of two thousand, four hundred dollars. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were ten thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. The tax value of the property is four thousand, eight hundred dollars, and with the other one, I would suggest the Board consider giving initial approval so we can get it out for upset bids.
All right, what's desired of the Board?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Smith, made a second, that is to adopt the resolution for parcel number eight-dash-zero-zero, eight-dash-zero-five-zero. Is any further discussion on the motion? All right, hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Item twelve is the County Manager's Report. Mr. White.
Good morning. Chairman, Commissioners, back again. I'm going to hide the clicker. Couple things, just before we get into, I actually have a scheduled agenda item here today, but myself, Shane, and two Commissioners, Commissioner Howard, Commissioner Hunt, went to Raleigh last week for County Assembly Day, had a great visit, got to see all our legislators, great feedback. It is a bit of slow go in Raleigh right now, is what we heard. There's some negotiations still ongoing about the budget. You know, hard to say when all that's going to sort itself out. We brought many projects we've discussed amongst this Board. We do have to have the understanding and balance that it is a short session, so there's not a lot of sometimes movement, the way we may want it, but some things that we can get on the table and try to get considered if there is a budget. Also, talked to them about policy and other things that impact the county that we heard about through the Association of County Commissioners. Each of the Commissioners got to share with them things that were on their mind. It was a really beneficial trip. You know, top everyone's list was education funding, just like you've heard through your budget process. I mean, that seemed to be everywhere we went, that was a topic, so just reported on that. And the Commissioners may provide more as they go along. And he got out of here before I could recognize him, but there was a young gentleman with Billy Wilks this morning. He's our summer intern in Parks and Rec. His name's Caleb, so if you see him around, he's here to learn all about how to run a rec department in the county and ball fields and all that good stuff, so we're happy to have him this summer. All right, in your agenda package, under Manager's Report, I think Steve's going to pull it up, there is a memo. This is a carryover item from our last budget work session where we talked about, you know, what are the trends in counties related to the fees they charge municipalities to collect their taxes, right? So, in general, you roughly spend about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year collecting all the taxes, including our own, with Leslie's Department. So, she has three divisions, tax collection is one of those three. So, in this memo, we're going to just kind of walk you through a brief legal, a brief background of the issue, the legal limitations, options, impacts, and then we've got some charts in the back, which we're going to cover with you, that cover sort of what other counties are doing and what may, some options may do. I kind of covered the reason we're here. We do stand out, I think there's a good note, and Shane worked really hard on this memo, by the way, so please step in, Shane, if there's something I missed, but we do stand out as having one of the lowest rates of the counties that we polled. And I think, Steve, now would be a good time just to go ahead and go to page two before we get too far into the meat. So, these are the counties that we polled. If you look at your memo there, we tried to hit counties that were of like size, counties in eastern North Carolina, maybe counties that did it a unique way. So, we kind of just walked through, Cravens at one percent for the record, so that's what we charge to anybody that we collect taxes for. You can see Beaufort, your next-door neighbor to the north, two percent, and I'm just going to kind of hit those. Carteret, two percent. Dare, one and a half. Onslow is one percent, a little unique here, up to ninety-five percent. Then, once they achieve ninety-five percent collection in a municipality, that fee goes to five percent, just in that municipality. So, they have to achieve that collection rate. Pitt, one-point-five. Wayne, one-point-seven-five. Wilson, one-point-five. Cleveland's probably our sister county out there from size and budget. That's one I kind of compare ourselves to a lot, they're at two percent. And then you've got all types of weird, some people do different rates for different municipalities, Some do a flat $2 per bill like Cabarrus County. Some of them like Orange, they've got a half a percent on all collections, but then they have a surcharge towards their software that does the collection. So I thought that was kinda interesting as we went through. Let's see if there was one more maybe. Durham County, 1% total, but then it's 1/6 of the amount collected. Above 97 goes to that same technology fee, so helps pay for the cost there. All right, so that's what's out there, that's what we looked at. The legal limitations and authority for the county under General Statute 168, 461. Enables any unit of local government to contract with any other unit of local government to execute an undertaking, including inter-local agreements for tax collection. They're of a reasonable duration, not to exceed 99 years. It is common, but not required, for counties in North Carolina to collect property taxes on behalf of municipalities. It's just because we're doing it for ourself anyway, and we're gonna collect countywide, so why not just add theirs in? There is, and I think Mr. Hodges shared this with me, there is the idea you get one tax bill in Craven County, right? So it's everything loaded up on one versus getting a tax bill from a municipality and a county tax bill. We do have, every, we do collect for all municipalities, that was a bit unique. There was an outlier there until about, I don't know, 10 or 12 years ago, which was the city of New Bern, they did collect their own taxes. But at a point in time, they decided that wasn't maybe what they wanted to do anymore, so we got an MOA or MOU with them. In that, though, it does stipulate that the county shall give the city no less than two years' advance notice if you plan on changing the fee. So inconsistency, any recommendation we give you today is gonna be consistent with that for all municipalities if you choose to change. So we're not gonna, we wouldn't recommend staggering somebody next year in the New Bern in two years, we just don't think that's fair. So the options there, if you look at the bottom, I'm still kinda, kinda here with that yellow, we're gonna work toward the yellow. You know, right now, 1% brings in 272,0210. 1.5%, which seems to be the consistent, if you had to find like a median number, probably that, it'd bring you at 405. An increase of 2%, which you saw in some of your neighboring counties, gets you at 540. Using sort of the Onslow County model, which is the 5% on collections above 95%, but 1% generally to that point would be 325,890. And that may vary, again, because it's 95% collection in the municipality, not countywide. And then lastly is what our recommendation is, and that's what the board has requested us to do, is to try to find something that fit here. Of course, we're not married to it, if you hate it, then we certainly understand. But it's 1% on any municipality that has less than 1,000 parcels. And it's 1.5% for any municipality that has more than 1,000 parcels in their jurisdiction. We use 1,000 parcels as a critical mass, meaning there's more cost, excuse me, in staff time and paper products and our software, meaning there's just more stuff to do because there's more of it. That was our benchmark there. If you go on to the second chart, it's attachment B. We can show you how it affects the different municipalities in the county. And it's based on inherently their valuation, we use 2024, and it excludes registered motor vehicles, that's what RMV stands for. You got your tax rate, that's levied by each of the municipalities. Then the actual, what's the levy is what they collect off that, if there was 100% collection. So you can see as you go down. Proportionate valuation to the total, proportionate levy to the total. And then you see what each municipality is paying the county, or what we're keeping on that 1% as we collect. And then the last column is the new fee model and how that changes. So just for reference, as you look down, the first three do not change, but when we get to Havelock, the first one that does. Currently paying 68,617. Under the new model, it'd be 102,926. And the same would be for New Bern, 171,592 now. Under the new model, 257,388. And then the subtle change in Riverbend, subtle change in Trent Woods. And then Vanceboro would make the same, because they are all, all of your municipalities that aren't above 1,000 or significantly below 1,000. I think Vanceboro may be the largest at roughly 525 parcels, I believe. And then if you go to attachment C, that shows with you, that's what I was looking for. That shows you the number of parcels in each municipality, and then their proportionate, their portion of that total.
Jack, I have a question. When it says non-exempt parcels, that's non-taxable property for, like?
Those are taxable property, so non-exempt would be, exempt would be the ones that are excluded from taxes, non-exempt, they pay taxes.
Okay, what's, define something that is exempt.
Church.
Okay, got it. That's what I thought, but I wanted to clarify.
Yes ma'am, this building, church.
Hospital.
Yep, yep, big one. Schools.
Can I ask?
Yes.
And I got Leslie here, if you have tax questions, Shane, Dean, myself, we're all available to help you work through this.
Right, Commissioner Smith.
I hope I'm not out of order, but I talked with Mr. White earlier about that when I came in, I just to share other information. But my question was to him was, why we were doing this and if there was a need? Because when I looked at that, some of the municipalities I thought could do this for ease and others could not. So my, my share, my thought is, if it's not a need, if it's not something that we have to do, we should leave it as it is. I don't, I don't think we should make a change if we don't have to. And cause some folks some stress that, you know, at this time, there's a lot of costs of people having to pay additional taxes already. So just sharing my thoughts with you.
And my thoughts were along those lines as well. If we're not having to raise taxes in order to cover this, to cover our costs, why would we inadvertently, in a roundabout way, do that to the municipalities?
Exactly.
My question is, Jack, are we currently in the red? When it comes to, I mean, are we, are we losing money with, by collecting taxes in these municipalities, or?
It's, you know, it's, that's a hard one to say. It depends on, you know, it's a delinquency rate problem. So the more delinquent you have, the more work the tax collection office does. The more severe the delinquency, the more work your county attorney and your tax office and myself and my team do. It's really, it's year by year, it's hard to say. You could have a really great year where the economy's good and we're doing just normal level work, or you could have a really bad year and we're swamped and, you know. But right now, I would say, you know, it's not one of those you can really do a cost analysis, are we covering costs with what we collect? Because you're collecting a bunch of money.
Yeah.
Right? But if you look here, I gave you the 272, 210.
Yeah.
And you're spending roughly 750,000 approximately. And you're collecting your own taxes in there too, which is, which is a big deal. I mean, we have the most parcels, we hit everybody, all 60,000, right?
Yeah.
So.
So we, and if, looking at it that way, though, we're?
Close.
Yeah.
It's close. Yeah, yeah.
Morning, Board. I just wanna give you a little background of what the current tax department is running under. We have a staff of five in our tax collection division. We currently, we have just crossed over 60,000 parcels, in fact, 60,009 parcels. So Craven County's only gonna get bigger, it's gonna only be more, okay? This is preparation, this is a minimum of a two-year notice to municipalities, this is not gonna happen this next year, okay? So I have a tax collection manager, I have a specialist, and then I have three deputy tax collection clerks. And they oversee, in fact, this past year, about 56 million, okay? And typically, and I'll tell you how we are ranking so far. You know that you have to pay your taxes by January 5th in order to not accrue interest. And we were right at 89 to 90%. So between January 6th and today, we have collected 5,518,000 just in that window. Now, what you don't see that goes on behind the scenes is, I have my five, but then I have Emily Mason in my personal property division, who is cross-trained to stay at the payment window to collect. I will be cross-training as well, Caitlin Wetherington, she will be the second one to take collections at the window. And then I will possibly very well be training a third. So I have two folks from my personal property who come over to assist the five in the tax collection division, and especially the last week in December and the first week in January. Now, so I already have one, and this upcoming season, I will have an additional two more, up to two more. And we've talked about this, hit on this just a little bit more. Well, one other point to that, you have to remember too, in personal property, that first week in January, now remember, taxpayers have until January 5th to pay without interest. That first week in January is when all of my personal property owners are required to begin listing their property each and every year. And in fact, we have just over 21,000 personal property owners. That first week in January is the absolute busiest week in my department. And then when we take about two people from my personal property to come over and collect, and then I'm looking at a third one. What is also going on for seven days, seven working days, is I coordinate with Sheriff's Department to have an SRO come over and make sure everything is going well and safely. So you have to, I wanna give you this background of what is currently going on. It's not just the collection of five tax collection members, we're pulling in our other resources. That's what it is today, okay? This is trying to prepare for that growth. Because we're only gonna get bigger, we're only gonna have more taxpayers. And so we're just presenting this now to give you preparation, okay? I hope, and if you have any questions for me, feel free.
Commissioner Mitchell.
I have a comment, and I think the county manager might want to expound on this. We have a lot of debate during budget season over what county government should do for municipal governments. We are providing a service to municipal governments. Now, the fact that we can do it more efficiently, that's, I think it's sort of a moot point. We are providing a service to municipal governments that we don't have to. It is saving them money and has been for quite a long time. I don't have an issue with charging them for it, I think it's fair. And if we get the amount of growth that we are looking for, that five-person tax department is not going to be a five-person tax department. It's going to continue to increase. This is a two-year heads-up, okay? Who knows what's gonna happen in terms of next 10 years? But with the amount of building and construction, I know that tax department's gonna increase. And employees are expensive, so I'm absolutely for this.
Mr. Chairman, I would have to agree with Commissioner that in this particular case, we're being very fair to the municipalities that don't have the money. However, we do have some big municipalities there that they run after us for all kinds of money. And I'll just name one, and that was the water bill that we got stuck with, that was three years old. I don't see any harm in raising these fees for those cities, municipalities. I think that in order for us to operate as a county, there's an awful lot of work that goes into this by staff, by the finance department. And I think that at this point, we should go ahead and raise these fees.
Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, I wanna just concur with the last two commissioners, I agree with them. I think, I think we need to understand that this rate that we're at goes way, way back. And a lot of, a lot of cost has gone into this department since this rate was established at 1% or whatever.
Right.
And I think about the latest, Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, a whole new software system has been installed at great cost to make sure that we can collect these taxes efficiently and that everything is done accurately. So it's, it's, it's an employee cost, it's a software cost, it's a cost to keep the lights on. Everything that we're doing is costing more. And I would say that if these cities, there's only, I think, five that are impacted, am I correct on that?
There are four.
Four. Those four can choose to collect their taxes themselves if they don't want to pay this, this additional small increase. So I feel strongly that this is in order, and I will be voting yes on this.
Okay, any additional, Commissioner Smith?
I'm asking the question probably. But as we grow, as we get larger, these municipalities increase, won't that be an increase in taxes for us? We'll have more funds. Am I, am I not understanding?
Well, as the, so as the rate grows and the levy grows, if you're collecting a percentage of the levy, you would inherently hold, keep more money. So if the levy was to go the other way, so taxes were to decrease, then you would get less money. So there's some variables in here, and I will tell you, I should have pointed this out, if you look at attachment B, that's the existing tax rate as of right now. I can tell you, one, two, three, four, five of those are going to change July 1st. Maybe more, I just, that's the five I know about. One of them significantly, significant tax increase in there.
So we're, so it's your opinion, we're increasing taxes to these municipalities?
No, you're, you're, well, I can't, I can't get into hypotheticals with you on that. But, you know, inherently, this is, you're, you're taking another half percent of what they're already collecting, right? For your cost in collecting the taxes.
So it's coming out of what we're already collecting, which I understand, but?
It's coming out of their portion.
So, yes, so we're not increasing taxes per se, but they could respond by increasing their own taxes.
That's the hypothetical situation which would be unique to some of them.
But that's not our responsibility.
We don't set the tax rate for them.
All right, any additional questions? All right, what's the desire of the board?
I just did have a comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, and as you guys know, I was against this because I felt like we were targeting New Bern. But the way the staff has set this up, I feel like it's, there's no target here. It's just, it makes sense for rural areas versus larger areas. So I think that I've, I do, and if you're norming a fee to local, to match areas around you, you're not just raising it, you're norming something that's gonna match other fees. And we're, we are a growing county, and, you know, the tax department's gonna need more staff, so someone's gotta pay for that. So it's gonna be only county, you know, people that live in the county paying for it? Or we're gonna share that burden with the municipalities?
Right.
With an additional fee, and that's up. So I'm, I, you've managed to change my opinion just by the way you've done this, which I don't feel like is targeted to any particular municipality.
Yeah, I just, yeah, to your point, Commissioner Howard, I mean, this is, this is the only reference guide we have, is what other folks do. And I mean, and I think I've said this to staff 10 times, you know, you would love it if there was more consistency in it. It's just all over the place. I mean, this one has no rhyme or reason why someone does it. I can't tell you why, some are at 2.5 and some are at a half. It's just, it's what fits for their county and what they believe is the right fee. There's no rule of thumb, I'd say, other than if you look at the median, which is probably roughly what we picked, 1.5%.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we change the collection fee to reflect 1.5 for municipalities with over 1,000 parcels and remain at 1% for municipalities of less than 1,000 parcels.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, and Jack, by what you were saying, this is a notice of two years, correct?
Well, let me walk you through a couple steps. So now that I know what recommendations on the table, my recommendation is also to give every municipality two years, not just New Bern.
As amended.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell makes amendment, you good with that?
Yeah.
All right, okay. All right, any additional comments, questions?
Please.
You might wanna open that as an equal to 1,000 parcels? You said less than or equal to.
I'm not hearing what he's saying.
He's basically suggesting, the way it's written on here is less than or equal to 1,000 parcels. So I'd said less than, I think that was what was in, Commissioner, so we're talking about one, if they get between 999 and 1,000.
Equal to or less than, as amended.
Second. Okay, all right, everybody clear on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, are you good with the motion? All right, if you will call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
None.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
No.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
No.
Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, what I would do at this point, now hearing that vote, we will notify the municipalities affected by June 30, and so this can take effect at your budget two years from now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's all I got unless you have questions.
Any questions for the county manager? All right, no, thank you, sir. All right, commissioners' report, who'd like to go first this morning? All right, Commissioner Mark.
I would like to make a motion that the commissioners get together and have a hearing. We had two gentlemen here last week, Mr. Treble and we had AJ, who owns a gun store, who has purchased land in St. Delights, and Mr. Treble has a church there. But we have five other areas in the, in the county that have driving, firing ranges. And we do not have an ordinance on the books. Where we have a number of other counties that have very strict ordinance, ordinances on these books. In some cases, we might not be able to change it because it's already happened. But in a lot of cases, I can see the county having more of these firing ranges come to being. And I think we should have some kind of an ordinance that gives us something to go on when somebody applies for a license for these. And that's what I'd like to discuss.
Okay, so you, you want to discuss it before you make the motion?
No.
Or that is a motion?
Yeah, I would like to discuss.
Okay, so the motion, you want to discuss it first?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, you've heard the discussion from Commissioner Mark, are there additional comments?
I, I will say that my, I have been, it's been brought to my attention that from SROs, that there are individuals firing near schools, and technically, they have a right to do that on private property, no matter how close it is to a school. I will say that's my concern. Of course, as someone who shoots regularly in their yard and has had a deputy called on them once, when I was doing nothing unsafe, but, you know, it's because someone moved to our neighborhood from somewhere else and they heard gunfire. I don't wanna limit anyone's Second Amendment right, certainly, but when you're near a school, I do have a concern. So as long as that, what you're proposing, would kind of at least discuss that, I don't know what we're gonna?
And a church.
And a church. I do think it's worth discussing, so I don't know where I land on it, but it is worth a discussion.
Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, this is a, this is a challenging one, I think, agreeing with the commissioner not to restrict. It helped me with my memory, about four or five years ago, we had someone, and maybe it didn't come to this board, but I had someone in my district who was shooting in their backyard with houses on both sides. We don't have anything that says you can or can't do that. So I think it might be wise to have staff- So I think it might be wise to have staff look into what some other counties are doing, and then consider whether or not we want to go along with some kind of restriction.
Well, I think staff has already did that. Jack, would you like...
I think we're talking about two different issues. So let me make sure I understand it. Your issue, I believe, is looking at how the commercial firing ranges are placed in the county, and whether or not the county needs an ordinance to address that as your public commerce.
Exactly.
I believe this other thing is, or this other issue is something about the discharge of firearms in proximity to structures, which is a different, this is any firearm, not just commercial firing ranges. Is that the way I understand it?
Yep.
I feel like with, correct, I'm just a question for you guys. If I'm shooting in my yard and, you know, a stray bullet goes onto someone else's property, that's, there's already laws governing that, correct? My bigger concern is the churches and schools. If you're near a school, and I don't know where, how the sheriff feels about this, if you're near, maybe his opinion would be valuable in this discussion, but if you're near a school, and, you know, it sends that school into a lockdown or a kind of a sub-lockdown, which, there's two levels, right? There's the lockdown that is like you're in your classroom, the lights are off, you're really quiet, kind of an intruder lockdown, then the secondary one is kind of like there's something going on in your area, everybody stays put for the time being, but they still continue to do their classwork and stuff, correct? But my concern is if someone's firing next to school and it's disrupting the school day, as in we're having, we're having to go to a lockdown status, A or B. And it has happened, I've believed, I believe, right? Where someone has been shooting, firing a weapon on their property and, and the school has to go into a lockdown because of that, that's a concern for me.
Sheriff, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I think we are talking about two separate issues here, and we want to make sure that, you know, we have an understanding. So do you mind coming to, Mike? Share with your knowledge, what is the law concerning if I want to go in my backyard shooting and it goes into somebody else's property and damages something there? Share with us what...
Yep.
Is there a penalty or whatever?
There is, yeah. You're fully responsible, you know, whenever you discharge a firearm, wherever that projectile goes, whether it's next door or a mile away, you're responsible for whatever damage that might be incurred. That's why we're always practicing safe gun safety. But yeah, and there are laws on the book that governs that, and we do enforce it occasionally when it occurs. But, you know, I do agree that there probably needs to be a county ordinance that will give us the means to take further action if need be in some of these cases. As, you know, I'm a huge proponent of the Second Amendment, but, you know, when I say that, it's got to be done safely. And I will say the overwhelming majority of your law-abiding, gun-tote and citizens know that.
Mr. Chairman, we've been, we're talking about individual cases here, and I think when I mentioned this, I was talking about five, driving range...
Shooting ranges.
Shooting ranges.
Yep.
Which is starting to become a problem in the county, because we have five right now, and we have no ordinance on the books, and I have a number of counties here that have ordinances on the books. And I think, that's why I feel we should have some kind of an ordinance when somebody wants to set up a driving range. Now, we probably are not going to go back and stop some of these driving ranges that have been in existence, but certainly any new ones, and it looks like we are developing new ones all the time. And I think that we should have some kind of an ordinance so that when a person applies for something like this, that we have something there that we can substantially talk to them about.
I have a couple comments, too.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt, and then we'll go back to Commissioners.
Okay, talking about the gun ranges, it would be very appropriate for us to look at some different scenarios there. The NRA has a handbook on guidelines for gun ranges. I think it would be smart and safe for us to look at those and see what those recommendations are, and see if there's anything that we need to do there. To Commissioner Howard's point, with all these new developments popping up all over Craven County, in my district as well, in the south of the base, I think it's prudent that, as these homes are closer and closer and these streets are more and more narrow for safety reasons, to review our ordinances. I'm not saying that we need to change any things, but we do need to look at them so that the sheriff and his people can keep everyone safe.
Sheriff, I'm not trying to keep you in the spotlight here.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I just, and I will get back to other Commissioners, I just don't want us to get off focus here on what today Commissioners, exactly what, you know, been brought before. You have the right to research anything, ask staff if you want to. What was brought to us was about shooting ranges. I mean, Commissioner Mark has received numerous calls about it, it's in his district, it goes into some of my district in that some of the same people that are, live in his district, they got family lives in mind, they've been contacting me also. So there is a great concern about, you know, having nothing on the books about these shooting ranges and where they could go. So that's one issue. We, as a Board of Commissioners, all of us here, I don't think there's nobody on here that wants to, and it's already been said, to restrict any citizen's ability to use a firearm properly. I mean, we, I support the Second Amendment 100%, and, you know, I think we'll get run out of this county if we ever start to have that discussion. So I want to make sure that for folks that are listening to us talk right now, that's not our desire. I want to take a step back just a minute, because perception may be that we're trying to do something very restrictive, and that's not our desire here. And it may be even against the law to some extent. But taking two issues, let's take one issue at a time. Sheriff, you agree to some extent that it will be helpful for your office if we had some type of ordinance in place far as shooting ranges?
I think, you know, one, if you all choose to put an ordinance in place, you know, our concern as part of the executive branch of government, the enforcement arm...
Enforcement.
Is that it is something that is going to be enforceable if needed, because we're the ones that have to take it to court. So one, is it enforceable, is going to be our main concern. And, you know, the public safety interest in it, you know, whether it's how these things are constructed, buffers, so there would probably need to be a lot of thought that goes into it, as you would with any ordinance, in regards to how they're constructed, where they're placed. Because right now, you know, we do have the state laws that govern, you know, if the projectile goes somewhere and does damage to property or person, that we can't enforce. And of course, we've got a noise ordinance, which, you know, can be difficult to enforce at times. It is very questionable at times as to how loud something was, or is it in fact disturbing somebody?
Can I ask, stop you right there. So noise ordinance has always been a debate on this board, we've known that, many of us have sat here. Is there anything that could be done that you feel like that would put more meat into making the noise ordinance more enforceable, or do you think it's about as good as it can get at the present time?
I would like to be able to come back on that once I research it a little more. I know at times our deputies, when they've been called, and, you know, obviously, usually the first and second time when we're called, you know, we try to use warning and education, you know, before we take any enforcement action. The overwhelming majority of the time, that works. It's probably one that needs to be revisited. I don't know when it was visited, but it's been the one we've had since I've been in office.
That may, and I don't know, not trying to speak out of turn, but that may help us in some of the concerns that have been addressed here, you know, shooting in neighborhoods so forth. I mean, if it becomes a nuisance, you know, at certain times of the day, you know, I don't know. We know that the noise ordinance is complicated, and, you know, you've got to be able to hear it, your deputies, you, y'all, you've got to be able to hear it when you go out...
Yes, sir.
Say that it's actually happening, and most of the time, the folks have already quit shooting or whatever, making that noise when you went out. Okay, all right. If you don't have nothing else, I'm not going to make you stand there in the middle.
I have one more question for him.
Yep, yep.
Before you leave, the firing near schools, what would be your recommendation for that, since it has sent, you said several times, sent a school into lockdown? Is there...
You know, it's, as far as putting a distance on it away from the school, you know, I think that's something we should look into. There have been a number of times, I will tell you, the majority of the times, it's been in the city limits that we've had to deal with these situations, you know, and many of these cities do have ordinances in regards to discharging firearms and stuff like that. However, we still follow the same protocol, whether it's in the city or whether it's James W. Smith in the western part of the county where you have hunters and all that stuff. So, you know, I would say maybe during this process, look at, you know, the distance from a church, a place where you're going to have amassing of citizens, that sort of thing. And one, you know, I would think maybe a lot of, put it, pushing out a lot of public information about, you know, gun safety and gun, you know, that sort of thing. So, but, once again, you know, the overwhelming majority of the folks in this county are very good about this, you know, so we don't have a lot of problems, but, you know, with these ranges popping up, the potential is there, so to get in front of it is probably a good, good thing.
And my second question was for staff. When a range comes in, that someone's creating a gun range, they have to go through planning. I feel like, I was told that Chad worked really closely with this last one, with recommendations and distances and barriers and stuff like that. Was that, is that correct, Chad? So before that gun range was set up, you did a lot, you put a lot of energy to make sure it was safe?
And all of those are voluntary methods that we recommended to the gun range owner.
So with the recommendations, if they don't take them up, they can still continue with the range, whether you, but this owner was doing what you asked them to do, or no?
It was amenable, but like I said, they're not, it's not...
Enforceable.
Okay, is that, you good?
All right, Commissioner Smith?
My thinking is this, I don't know that we can stop the increase, but we can control with the premise of what they should look like and be like. I think that the operator should have in writing to us the range, the size, the districts that they're going to be shooting, they should have what, the height of the walls or barriers, all this information that makes it clear to us that they are safe before they can operate these ranges. I don't think that we need to try to stop the number of people, but we need to control how they are, these ranges are used and the qualification of the range. So I think that it is one, you kept mentioning the church and the school, but to me, it's just as important to, if it's just my house, it's just as important for my house to be safe as it is for the church to be safe. So I think that we need to make sure that these ranges are safe, not just for churches or schools, they need to be safe for everybody, all the neighbors living around. And I think that it's not taking away gun freedom, well, most of us have one, our family members have one or two, but we need to have, be safe in how we use them. That should be a requirement.
You can't shoot a firearm.
And I don't think we should step back, I think we need to step forward with enforcing these, making sure that we have the ordinances and making sure that we enforce them. And the citizens have a right to be safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Mark?
I think I would like to make, change my motion and make my motion that we ask staff to prepare some type of ordinance for the Commissioners to look at and go over, and at either at a closed session or work session, that we take care of this.
Second.
Can I just get a friendly amendment, or maybe more than one choice? If they research it, give us multiple choices?
Well, I think we could ask for additions if we get the amendment. If you have something that you don't like, you can ask if that can be put in.
Let's get a starting point.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
This is important, what we do. So what I think here is the board would like for staff to prepare a draft shooting range ordinance for the board to review and determine whether you want to move forward, which if you did, you would have to have a public hearing, because it is an ordinance change.
Correct.
So is there a time you'd like to have that happen?
I think the sooner we do it, the better.
So you'd like to have a draft ordinance in a couple weeks?
Yes.
July 1st, second meeting in July?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, let's do second meeting in July, I mean the...
July 15th?
Yeah.
All right, is that okay with your motion?
That's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell, you second it?
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, everybody, far as our board understands the motion, any discussion on the motion?
I'll just, my only comment is to make sure that this is well public.
I just, I think you got three issues on the table right now, but this one's one. I'm going to come to your second, because it's a whole different platform that I could go on that side.
First one, shooting range.
But this is specific to a commercial shooting range.
That's right.
Activities of that, which is more land use ordinance than what I think we're talking about on the other.
My comment was about that, though. Can we make sure this is well-publicized to all parties involved, so we have plenty of public input on this?
Can we look at it first?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think...
Yeah, let's look at it first.
We're not going to have anything to publicize until you get it in the draft.
Yeah, whenever we get to that point.
So then I think on the 15th, we would, of course, if it's an ordinance change public hearing, you got to run it in the newspaper and, you know, all those things. And I do think you will have some public input there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but I'd like to look at it first.
Additional discussion?
Yes, I would just like to not only look at our neighboring counties and what they're doing, but also, please, can we look at the NRA regulations on that, please? They have an entire manual on it.
NRA does have a good, on best practices and stuff like that.
Yeah, we already got it. We don't need to spend a lot of time if something's already in place.
Well, man, if I'm not mistaken, someone presented a Jones County ordinance and maybe another one in July, I think a citizen did, so there's some nearby...
Jones, Pitt County.
Pitt County has one, yeah.
All right, if you re, Will, Jack, you got the motion there before you, read it as you interpreted, make sure everybody's good.
So the motion by Commissioner Mark would be to establish, present a draft ordinance on commercial shooting range operations at the July 15 Commissioner meeting for review by the board.
Correct.
Okay, Commissioners, everybody in agreement? Are you hearing the motion? We're going to vote on it. All right, any further discussion? The only comment I'll make, and I just want to reiterate what you just said, neighboring counties have ordinances in place.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you know, we do not. So this is, you know, opportunity for this Board of Commissioners to review and then to hear from the citizens at the appropriate time of, you know, how they desire to move forward. So this is just a process to begin, okay? All right, here, and no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but thank you for sharing the information. All right, any...
We can cover these other two that I heard. So the other was noise ordinance, and I understand you'd like a review of that ordinance? Maybe I'd share a bit of some feedback on things that maybe his deputies and staff see as problematic and bring that process to something the board would like?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Just as an example, I've had noise ordinances in my district, and I've gone out there and I certainly could hear the noise. However, the sheriff went out there and he or she couldn't hear the noise. So the next time I went out with them, and they both of us heard the noise.
I'd like to make a comment to the county manager. Having a noise ordinance that's not enforceable is not much use. Okay, it just makes us feel good, okay, but once a citizen figures out that it's not enforceable, if they're violating it by irresponsible behavior, they're not, they're not going to pay any attention to us. So when we look at the noise ordinance, I'd like to put, recommend that we put a heavy focus on, is this enforceable? And not spend too much time on something that frankly is not, and it's not just our time and staff time, it's also law enforcement time. And if there is another type ordinance or issue that is enforceable, I'd rather put some focus on that one.
Well, the important thing is the noise ordinance is a 24-hour...
Yeah, yes, sir, I hear that, but I've had them in my area in the... Yeah, yes, sir, I hear that, but I've had them in my area in the past, and we all talked about it, but at the end of the day, there was nothing we could do, because it has to be someplace where it's measured. But I'm not against redoing the noise ordinance. My point is, make sure whatever we have is enforceable.
Yeah, well, the only thing is, it was enforceable in my case, where there was a noise ordinance, a very bad one, and the person was told that if they don't fix it, they'll be charged $500 a week for every week that it exists. And they took care of it within a week.
All right, Commissioner Smith, you had a question?
I was, I was about to ask Commissioner Mitchell, what ordinance is not enforceable?
Okay, if someone is firing a gun, and it's loud, and it violates the noise ordinance, and they're not firing it when the sheriff's deputy shows up, how do you prove that you violated the noise ordinance? That's, I think, the, you know, if it's a party, if it's the neighbor, it has to be ongoing when somebody shows up.
That's true.
It has to be provable.
But if it's a party...
I'm not worried about parties, we're talking about guns here.
I know, but you said if it was a party.
Well, if it's a party, it can be going on when law enforcement shows up there.
Right.
If it's somebody shooting in the backyard next to my house...
Well, if it's a practice, you can probably get the...
Say it again.
Officers out there while they're shooting, because usually people don't have something, they have a practice.
No, ma'am, when somebody's shooting nutrients in their backyard, it's done by the time the cop car shows up.
So they're just shooting, only if they're just shooting once, but if it's a practice, you can have the...
No, ma'am, it didn't work that way.
Commissioners, could I ask this?
Yes.
If we could, great discussion. I think we've got before us, just to talk about this one ordinance, is going to be complicated. It's going to require staff a lot of time to be able to bring something back to us. If we could, let's handle this one.
Yep.
We hear that there are other concerns, and we take them into consideration, but let's, if we could, let's handle this one, and then after we come, we'll come back. We probably need to have a work session a little later on...
Good idea.
...to discuss it more in detail, and definitely not trying to put off nobody's concerns, but this one has been brought to us by multiple citizens, so we know that there's concern in the county about it, and that's why we're addressing it, you know. So, everybody good with that?
Yes, sir. Let's move on.
Commissioner Mark, did you have anything else to bring before?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
No.
All right, Commissioner Smith? Okay, Commissioner Howard?
I'll just say, I enjoyed my time in Raleigh, working with Commissioner Hunt, Jack White, on lobbying, Shane was there too, correct? Sorry, Shane. Talking to our state representatives, making them aware of the issues that we have, seeking funding for Craven County, it was very productive. You know, Jack shed some light on some information, and Sherry did, and I tried to, to our state reps, to our state senators, that they may not have known before. So projects that we're working on here in the county, some detail that they weren't maybe, hadn't realized before. So I think it was a productive, and we learned a lot of insight, what's going on up there that we didn't know before, so, and why the budget's kind of moving slowly, and some of the, you know, the dynamics there, so. And Sherry's passion for Havelock showed when we were talking about our Government East Center, something that we've been working on. So I look forward to, you know, pushing the projects of Craven County more with some of the folks up there, and thank you, Sherry, for joining me, I appreciated your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
No, nothing.
Okay, Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, two things quickly. Number one, I believe this is my 10th budget between the county and the city time that I've spent as an alderman and a commissioner. And I would just say, this was one of the smoothest, if not the smoothest, process, and I credit, as has already been done, staff, but I also credit this group of Commissioners as we, as we went through this. Very little disagreement, there was no contention, there was no argument, it was a very smooth process, unlike, and I will not name it, at least one municipality that just went through a very contentious budget time. And so I'm told, I wasn't there, but I'm told they had a, one of our municipalities within our county had a very unpleasant budget time. So thank you to everybody sitting up here, as well as everybody that prepared the budget. So that's number one. Number two, everybody knows that we haven't seen a drop of rain to speak of for about three weeks. I just drove from the western part of the state to the eastern this past week, and our crops, our farmers are in trouble. They need rain badly and quickly. There's none on the immediate forecast, but that can change. So those of you who, and I hope it's everybody, who are in the habit of praying, we need to all pray that God will send rain to this county and send it quickly. And maybe that's selfish, but I feel strongly that that's something we all need to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, we've been asked to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A and 3, to preserve the attorney-client privilege. We're going to take about a 15-minute break before we go into closed session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second is in discussion on the motion. Here now, all those in favor, signify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we're going to take a recess for about 15 minutes, and then we'll come back.